It's a great day in Kershaw County. We have a quorum. I believe Mr. Jones is on the way. We've had a great retreat. I thank the county staff, especially Mr. Carpenter and Vic and Danny and the rest that came and spent their Saturday locked up with this rough bunch, working on the future of our county. Meanwhile, we've got new schools and new parks and a trained and ready workforce. So it is a great day here. We've also got a new granddad, Mr. Gardner, is celebrating. There is Mr. Jones. And finally, I want to recognize Damian Powell here, who's working on his Eagle Scout. Damian, would you stand up and tell us what troop you're in? 303 for the record. Thank you, and congratulations in advance.
Welcome to county council.
And with that, we have a full body of council, and I ask Mr. Conell to lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Please stand.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we're thankful for our many blessings and opportunities to be together tonight, with great wisdom, guidance, and spirit as we try to make decisions regarding policy, but also people. We're thankful for all those who sacrifice, protect, and serve. We pray that the food bugs going around, other ailments, and distresses in our community, that will please heal us all, who sit in the name of Jesus Christ today.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Conell. And with that, we welcome our acting attorney, not Ken DeBose.
That's right.
Tommy Morgan. Have anybody signed up for public comments, Tommy?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have four. First, we have Mr. Albert Huff speaking on shipping containers.
Very good. Please. Who is that? Name again, please.
Albert Huff.
Mr. Huff? As you come forward, sir, we'll limit it to about five minutes. Keep your comments on topic. There's no Q and A, no back and forth. We're here just to listen. But if you'll leave your contact number, we'll get back to you on anything you bring up.
It's on the form.
Absolutely. And also, the rules are that we respect the dignity of the body and the fact that this is the people's house here. Please, go ahead.
Well, certainly. I'm here to oppose the shipping ordinance container where we have said, the first item I don't like is item A. It says, "Shipping containers shall not..."
Sir, would you talk into the mic?
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Talk into the mic.
I got you.
Thank you, Mr. Huff.
First, this ordinance is poorly written because it says, first off, that shipping containers shall not be used, shall not be used as a principal use or structure. I assume from the way that was written, it should say habitable structure, but it does not. It says principal use or structure. When you look at the definition of principal use in the zoning regulation, it says the primary purpose for which land or structure is used. When you put that in the definition, it comes up fairly meaningless. It says, "Shipping containers shall not be used as a primary purpose for which land or structure is used." It doesn't make much sense. So obviously, they're there for a primary purpose, but the law, I assume, was written to say habitable, but it doesn't. It says primary, which a primary purpose for the land is used. If the land is used as a farm, that means you could use them as a farm, because that's the principal use of the land. If the principal use of the land is to sell hot dogs or have a restaurant, then they could not be used there. That's what it says. Shall not be used. You use your strongest language to say shall not, which is universal and implies no exceptions. So that portion is definitely poorly written. And in addition to that, we have plenty of zoning regulations, you know, in subdivisions that don't allow shipping containers, I'm sorry, and other places where shipping containers aren't allowed anyway, but in like a general usage, they have been there for years and have done anybody any harm. I think nowadays, people look at them as they're ugly, basically, is what this ordinance tries to cover by screening or setbacks or whatever. But they're certainly no more ugly than most of the Dempsey dumpsters we see hanging out at nearly every place we see. And that leads to the item C of this, which says they shall be permanently screened. Now, it doesn't say temporary. It says permanently screened. And then of all things in there, it talks about you should use a bulldoze up earth berms that would be eight feet high to screen them. Well, that would be about as ugly a thing as you'd ever seen in your life, big mounds of dirt surrounding shipping containers. Besides that, the shipping containers are taller than eight feet, so you would still see the tops over top of a berm. I mean, it says here, not less than eight feet. So most shipping containers are near 12 feet. I mean, you're talking about a fence that's 12 feet high. I mean, it's just kind of ludicrous. And most fencing that you were going to get is either going to be the treated dog-eared fencing, which is typically very ugly. After about 10 years, it looks like it's just trashed, or these chain-linked fences with slating in them typically. And I would say those are not very appealing anyway. Most shipping containers I've seen, we're just riding around the county, are set on a pad. They're out in the open. They're painted. They look fine. They're not really harming anybody. If they're right by somebody's house, I think we have ordinances enough to cover that to say, hey, you can't put it in front of your house. Hey, you can't put it in your neighbor's, right next to your neighbor's backyard. You need to put them somewhere that's not in a residential area, but a general area where we allow things like that. So I'd appreciate it if you look at the ordinance a little closer. If it's poorly written, it needs to be rewritten. And just give it a second look, because I think it definitely needs it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in tonight, Mr. Huff. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Next is Mr. Stephen Lee speaking on shipping containers.
It's Mr. Lee?
Reverend Lee.
Reverend.
Hey, Reverend, how you doing?
Pastor. I don't like Reverend.
All right, sir.
Because I'm not very reverent, I suppose. Policy and people in the prayer tonight. I heard that. I wonder how many shipping containers there are in the county. I wonder if the ordinance, as it's written, is going to include Walmart, which has quite a few shipping containers all around it all the time, and other businesses, large businesses as well. Maybe that's the primary use. Maybe that's a legal term that I also don't understand along with Mr. Huff. Doesn't quite gel with me. I am a shipping container owner. My brother owns a shipping container that's on my father's property. Things are stored there that would probably be inclined to be stolen because they're valuable. I decided to get a shipping container when my theft loss with my farm was approaching $3,000. And I thought, well, I can buy a shipping container and put it on my place for that. Had no idea that I was just about to become disobedient. The Pharisees brought Jesus to the, the priests brought him and said, "If he were not a malefactor, we would not have brought him to you," in John 18. I don't want to be a malefactor, and I don't want to get rid of my container. So I would just speak on behalf of other container owners that I would like for a change, a substantive change to be made to this policy, allowing the reasonable use of shipping containers. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Next to speak is Mr. Chris Jones on EMS.
Chairman, members of council, I come to you tonight, not in any of my official capacities, but as a citizen of Buffalo-Mount Pizga area, and I want to give out some thank yous, a little backstory behind it. Actually, this time, when y'all had your last meeting, January 22nd, my mother came over to my house. We actually watched the county council meeting on TV, on the live screen. And Mr. Gardner, we had you up on the live screen, and she said, "You look more like Skinny every time she sees you." Because Skinny Gardner was her high school teacher. He taught math, and he coached at Mount Pizga High School. She's born and raised in the Buffalo-Mount Pizga area. So am I. I'm still a resident there. But unbeknownst to any of us, she left my house about 7:30 that night, and on the way home, she was going up the stairs in front of her house, and she fell. She fell that night. It was 7:30 that night. When she had to fall, she had a flashlight, keys. She did not have a cell phone. She had no way of communicating to anybody. She basically fell, broke her hip, broke her shoulder, broke her ribs on the front porch. You know, she kind of fell down to the ground. That morning, well, she laid out there all night. It was 30-degree weather, so she laid outside all night. That morning, thankfully, thank God, my uncle, who lives next door, his name's Benjamin Holden, he happened to go by, saw her laying out on the yard, turned around and come back, you know, because he said it didn't look right. She had tried all night to, she finally made it to the flashlight to try to signal anybody that would come by. She lives on Fred Gardner Road. I know you probably know where that is, Mr. Gardner. It's not a well-traveled road, but it is a cut-through road, so there's cars that go by all hours of the night. But thankfully, once my uncle found her, my aunt called 911, and we had a fast response thanks to EMS Station 5, which is on Porter Road. It was 15 minutes from the 911 call until an EMS unit was on scene. And I attest that to, and I can't thank dispatch enough, Ms. Brenda Johnson, who took the call, Ms. Emily Bass, who dispatched it, along with Patricia Crawford and Jean and all those in dispatch. And I can't thank EMS enough, Gerald Blanchard and his crew. Shawn Powers was the paramedic, and Jade Hoskins was the EMT that responded. So I just wanted to thank them and really thank you guys for investing in EMS. And this is a real-life situation to where I think it made a difference. She's been taken to Richland Hospital. She's had a hip replacement so far. She's still got some work to do with her shoulder. She's got a long ways to go to rehab, but she's on the way to recovery. And I just want to take time, as a citizen from that area, to thank you guys for your investment.
Good show. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Finally, Mr. Tom Webb speaking on containers.
I had a mama and a daddy, and they raised me, according to some people, pretty good. Some of y'all might not think so, but at least they didn't raise a little socialist. I think they did pretty good without a lot of government help, no government help. If anything, they helped other people. They didn't receive help. They worked hard. And their parents knew how to raise people without the government, without the government telling them all kinds of things, micromanaging their lives. And so I guess that's kind of where I'm coming from. And I'm going to speak on the shipping containers somewhat, and I like to speak on a lot of things sometimes at once. And where our laws come from, codified customs, written down what people have been accustomed to. Americans have been accustomed to an awful lot of freedom, and it's slipping away ordinance by ordinance. If you want to pass another ordinance, I wish you would pass one against ever doing another comprehensive plan. This is an overbearing, un-American way to snow the people with so many ordinances they don't know how to respond. And it gets done again and again and again. And then that comprehensive plan 10 years ago, where supposedly these shipping containers were prohibited and yet weren't because people still bought them and used them, there's only one sentence in there that says that they would be prohibited. I would just love to see it go back to planning and zoning and undo it all, but I'd like to see you undo the whole thing and go back and try to pass each ordinance that's in there one at a time. Good luck with that when people start showing up to say, "I don't like it, and I don't like it." But that's the American way, and you haven't been following. Whoever passed that comprehensive plan 10 years ago was not doing it the American way. There's some other kind of weight that has slipped in here that's not like us. And the uses for these containers, so many things you could use them for. For instance, they're very lightning-proof. You could be in it and get struck by a bolt of lightning and never feel it. You could fasten them down with cables, and a tornado could come through, and it would still be there. They're wonderful things, and we should not be deprived of them. It seems like little by little, we start losing something. And way long time ago, Daniel Webster, who was an orator and a lawyer, about 200 years ago, knew something of human nature and what to expect from people. And he wrote something about the Constitution, and I'll read it very, very short. "It is hardly too strong to say that the Constitution was made to guard the people against the dangers of good intentions, the dangers of good intentions. There are men in all ages who mean to govern well, but they mean to govern. They promise to be good masters, but they mean to be masters." Like I started out saying, I had a mama and a daddy, and I don't want any of y'all to be my daddy, and especially don't want you to be my mama.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Webb. Mr. Morgan?
There are no other speakers, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, very good. And that completes the public comments. We move now to the adoption of the agenda. It's on the board and in your packet. Can we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay. Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gardner. Any discussion on the agenda? I'd only point out that we're going to have an executive session tonight, and it doesn't appear that any vote is required, but there may be. That'll be 12 towards the end. Any further discussion? Seeing there is none, move to a vote. All those in favor, so signify. And it's unanimous, and the agenda is adopted. We move to the approval of minutes. We'll do it in two parts. The first one is part A, which is on the board, which is the January 22nd minutes that we had at the last council meeting. Can we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the January 22nd, 2019 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. A second?
Second.
A second for Mr. Snodgrass. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, we move to a vote. All those in favor, so signify. And it passes unanimously and approved as the minutes for January 22nd. We move now to the retreat, ably conducted by Mary and Danny and Vic and the whole team of the staff. That's at Tab B and also on the, as required by law, it's also up on the board. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the retreat?
So move.
Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Conell. Thank you, man. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, Mary, and we move on to the next items in the agenda, with first of which, there is a series of three resolutions. The first resolution of the county council approving an agreement as to road and parking infrastructure and other matters related thereto. It's at Tab C and on the board. Turn to Mr. Carpenter to take us through this, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, what you have in front of you is a resolution that is enabling the county to reimburse itself from bond proceeds from the 2014 bond for construction projects being done out of CCTC ATech Joint Use Campus.
Very good. Can we have a motion, perhaps follow a little bit about discussion?
So, I yield.
So move.
Okay. Mr. Snodgrass, we have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bozard. Take us a little further into the detail on the discussion on that. Mr. Carpenter, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, as part of the joint use campus, the ATech and the college were going to share certain parts of infrastructure, parking and roads, being the chief ones. The county was committed to put almost $1.8 million into that project. Those projects are now almost completed, so the county has been reimbursing those expenses, and they were to be, they are to come from the proceeds of the bond that was issued in 2014 for that purpose.
Very good. I want a clarification. We established a corporation for that purpose, did we not?
Yes, sir.
And does this need to go back towards the corporation, or is this...
Yes, sir.
Straight up in front? You got that legal piece? Okay. Very good. And I think the corporation is headed up by Dennis Stuber, right as our chair...
Correct.
Right. Thank you. All right. Other discussion here? I have one point to make. Tomorrow, is it 9 o'clock? We're going to have a meeting on the joint use campus. This may be a little far astray, but I do want you to know that fundamental to every start is an end, and we're looking towards the conclusion of the project that was begun by my predecessor chairman, Jean Wise. You, Jimmy, were part of that, and I think Sammy was too. Were you a part of that, Tom?
Yes, he was.
So this has been a long road to get that campus set up, and I've asked Mr. Carpenter to have a meeting tomorrow with all of the stakeholders, to include CCTC and so on, to make sure we close this project out as ably as it was begun. Any other discussion? Okay, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And Mary, it passes unanimously. We move to the second resolution, and it also is, yep, it's on the board, authorizing the approval and execution of the facility encroachment agreement and by and between CSX Transportation, Inc., Kershaw County. It's at Tab D and on the board. With that, Mr. Carpenter, just a little explanation, and we'll move to a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this relates to the town of Elgin and the building of a new restaurant and the tying in of that restaurant to the county sewer system by which we must secure an encroachment from the CSX Railroad, which part of their right-of-way is affected.
Very good. I see we have our illustrious mayor here and Elgin News. Can we have a motion to so approve, please?
So may.
Mr. Conell, is your district? A second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Tucker. Any discussion? It looks straightforward. With that, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, so signify. And it's unanimous. We move now to the third resolution by Kershaw County Council consenting to a sublease by and between Central Carolina Technical College and Kershaw County Chamber. And I think we have the chamber represented here tonight, too. I think the president's here, Kim. Mr. Carpenter, can you take us through this, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of councils, you recall, several meetings ago, the council amended the intergovernmental agreement between the college and the county in order to allow uses of the facility there that would not be explicitly educational in nature. This is the next step, which is actually approving the sublease between the college and the Chamber of Commerce for that property that was formerly used by the county.
All right. Can we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mr. Tucker, and we'll give you a second.
Thank you.
Mr. Bozard, thank you. Any discussion? It's, to me, it's just wonderful to see the staff move through these complicated things with such clarity so we can vote on them very, very easily. These are important, though they're quickly dispatched, and they're quickly dispatched because the staff's done their work. Any further discussion? Seeing there is none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor, so signify. And it's unanimous, and Mary, we passed all three resolutions. We move now to a series of ordinances, and believe there's only one. I think it's on the board. It's the second reading of an ordinance by Kershaw County to amend the County Unified Code of Zoning and Land Development Regulations for the accessory structures and uses. It's at Tab F and on the board. I believe this is placed on the agenda by Mr. Bozard. You have the right of the honor, please, sir.
Thank you very much.
Can you make a motion?
I make the motion that we approve second reading of the ordinance to establish the containers.
And can we have a second to place it in play for discussion?
Second.
Second for Mr. Tucker. Mr. Bozard, you wanted to have a few words?
Yes. This ordinance originally, no one in Kershaw County could have containers in their yards. We tried to amend it so they could have containers. Anybody that had containers in the yard had them illegally, and we're trying to fix this. So now, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tucker, who has an amendment to this.
Mr. Tucker, will you want to make the amendment?
Yes, sir, if I may. Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Bozard. At this time, I hereby make a motion that the ordinance to amend the Kershaw County Unified Code of Zoning and Land Development Regulations, the LDR, Section 3.25, to amend the regulations for accessory structures and use be amended as follows. The title of the ordinance should read, "An ordinance to amend the Kershaw County Unified Code of Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Section 3.25, to amend the regulations for accessory structures and use. The first whereas paragraph removed entirely. The second whereas paragraph removed from the word unanimously." The third paragraph be amended to read, "Whereas Kershaw County Council wishes to amend the Unified Code of Zoning and Land Development Regulations." And the second amendment section of 3.2.5-3, "Location of accessory structures," which adds, "Shipping containers be removed entirely." That is my motion.
Very good. Can we have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bozard. Would you lead us in discussion, Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir. We've struggled with this, and I just want to make sure that the public understand what we did last council meeting was part of the right step to follow up in this meeting. So what we're trying to do is make it where folks aren't in violation of this law, and then eventually have planning and zoning go back to reassess, what, is there, does it need to be an ordinance, or does it need to be rewritten, or whatever the case may be?
Very good. Mr. Bozard, you have a second?
Yes, just to make it clear, Mr. Tucker, would you explain in good and simple language that we are eliminating all containers from the ordinance, period?
Yes, sir. We're deleting the shipping containers from the ordinance.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, you helped out. Do you want to have anything to say?
Good after me.
All right.
I want to hear what he has to say. I know he has some comments. I want to hear what he has to say.
All right. Mr. Conell?
I have some questions, but I haven't formulated them yet.
Okay. Let me just, thank you very much. Let me just say this. Comment was made, this was put on the agenda because it needed to be done. No, it did not need to be done. I voted against it 10 years ago. I voted against it last week. We have planning and zoning rules and regulations that govern structures and yards, and shipping containers can also be held under that umbrella. However, Council, Vice Chairman Tucker did call me. He did ask me whether I co-sponsored this amendment with him. I said, "Well, let's have some clear language about it. What do you want to do?" And he explained it to me. So I do support this tonight because you're striking it from the books, and you're sending it back to planning and zoning. And I was told by staff that if this wasn't council-driven, they would have never pushed this before county council because they didn't see the need for it. So I have some issues with it, and I certainly will be supporting your amendment tonight, Mr. Tucker, because it does strike it from the books. It'll take you back to planning and zoning, and I hope that planning and zoning will use some good common sense and not try to just create more bureaucracy for the folks of Kershaw County. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your support.
Other comments? Mr. Bozard?
Yes, sometimes in working with these ordinances, the old saying is, "You got to go around your elbow to get up to your shoulder," or something like that, what that was. And sometimes it don't think like we're getting there, but we're trying to get there. And there's no straight line. We've got to do other things to get something done. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, David?
I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Tucker and Mr. Jones, for working on this. As I said it two weeks ago in the meeting on 22nd, I second Mr. Bozard's original motion because I felt like it was important to get this on the floor, to have a conversation about it. Because, just to be clear, everybody who had a shipping container was out of code. And I felt really bad about my friend, Pastor Steve Lee, being a malefactor. I mean, really, it kept me up, you know? He even got assured about it. So I felt last week, or two weeks ago, that it was a move that put us in the right direction to have a conversation about this, to allow the public to come and to comment on it. And I believe this motion, this amendment, just further helps us, helps us take care of cleaning up some ordinances that just need to be looked at again. So thanks for your work.
Other comments? Mr. Conell?
I formulated the questions now. So I'm looking at Section 3.5, 2-1, and it also talks about shipping containers. So I anticipate we might, and I've downloaded the most recent version we have online, so version we have online, so I anticipate we might have another amendment coming for third reading. And this is talking about screening. The language kinda makes it apply and kinda doesn't, but it's enough that it's a question, and it's talking specifically about shipping containers. I opposed the ordinance on first reading, because it was, to be honest, just confusing. As the books had it, you could have your house as a shipping container if it met the building codes, but you couldn't use it as an accessory structure or for storage. And then what we read on first reading was, you can have it as an accessory structure for storage, but not as a house. So now, I actually like what we have tonight, removing further restriction on shipping containers. You could still use it as a primary residence if you wanted to. Heck, are the strongest things out there on the market if you wanna put the money into bringing them up to building code and standards. I've got a friend in Charleston who has a shipping container house. It's absolutely beautiful, and it's probably the most hurricane-proof thing down there. But I think we probably need a little bit more comprehensive look at shipping containers in the ZLDR overall, because we have other ordinances, or at least one that I've found, that speaks to it and talks about screening, which is kind of inconsistent, I think, with the comments I've heard tonight of, we just wanna remove restrictions on shipping containers. One pointed clarification for me. So if we remove this restriction tonight, if this motion passes, would setbacks still apply to shipping containers? And that's up for whoever wants to answer it, whether it's Planning and Zoning or bigger attorney?
Yeah, well, let's ask Mr. Connel to come on up. Mike?
From my understanding, and we talked it over a little bit with the attorney, once you remove that language, there will be no regulations of the shipping containers.
Okay, so the hypothetical I would be concerned with is if, between now and I understand somebody might wanna send this back to Planning and Zoning, the commission, for maybe a more detailed look at shipping containers, if between now and then, somebody puts a shipping container right on their property line within what would be considered a typical setback for an accessory structure, would they then be grandfathered or a non-conforming use if we passed a code later on? Say it's in two months or three months, we go through multiple readings. Would that be a grandfathered use, and then you'd have this shipping container that would be in a traditional setback?
Sure. For it, in order for it to count as a non-conforming issue, which is synonymous with grandfathering, it would have to be legal at some point in time. So if we required a permit, or however that would be, if we just did not regulate them, and one day we decided to start regulating them, my assumption would be it would be a grandfathering or non-conforming issue.
Yeah, so that's a concern for me. If it could be stuck in a setback area, because we're totally taking away all restrictions, at least beforehand, it was considered somewhat of an accessory structure, and setbacks or something else would apply. We had some way to say, you can't just set it on, you can't set a 40-foot-long, 12-foot-high shipping container on your neighbor's property line. So anyway, I'm willing to support it tonight, but I think by third reading, we gotta do some more work to make sure it's in line with maybe other hypotheticals, but at least the one I mentioned tonight. And then also, so that we can address Section 3.5.2-1.
Screening of the storage containers?
Yeah. Those are the questions I have.
Okay, Mr. Bozard, I'll come to you.
Mr. Connel?
Yes, sir.
Unless the building codes has changed, you can't use setbacks to put buildings on, build on anything else. Has something changed in that?
Well, that's if we required it to be a building. We're not, if we just unregulate them, we're not categorize them as a building. So they would be able to be put anywhere, they could be put in the road. I mean, we wouldn't have any jurisdiction over enforcing them.
No, they can't. Well, setbacks is setbacks. You can't build in them. Right?
There are, you're not, you can't build in a setback. It's a non-viable area.
Exactly right. So we can't put containers in setbacks.
You don't. Well, we wouldn't be regulating those particular structures. I shouldn't say structures, those elements. We wouldn't be regulating them, so.
I'd be happy to respond if I might, Mr. Chairman. Then I'll respond after you, if it'd be helpful. I think the issue here is, these would be buildings with no name, basically. I mean, we would call them shipping containers, but our code wouldn't really call them anything. And it'd be like just setting something there. You don't have to build a pad. You don't have to pour a footing. You don't have to do anything that requires a permit to back a truck up and set it down in a particular area. So I guess.
It would just be personal property?
Yeah, from my comments, I hope what you're getting is at least setbacks should apply to shipping containers. At least that.
That's an interesting point, and we should take that up with the staff. Let's have a review of that, okay? Mr. Gardo is next up, please.
I was just gonna say, don't some of the subdivisions self-govern them themselves with covenants and things like that? Would that not apply to some of these things as well?
Well, the conversation we had was, before now, they were regulated, so most people didn't put these particular things in the covenants. So, I mean.
I mean, it certainly wouldn't apply to most of the county, but in some subdivisions and things, as they put in certain things, such as square footage and things like that when you build a house. I mean, I'm just saying, would they not apply in some cases? But, I mean, what you're saying is that since this was not in there, maybe they didn't put this in. It's a covenant?
Yeah, I don't remember too many covenants that came through addressing particular shipping containers, because shipping containers were outlawed in our ordinance to begin with.
Yep, very good. Thank you. Jimmy, please, sir.
Well, I just don't buy any of this. You know, we regulate what we want to regulate, Mr. Connel. You know, there's a lot of ordinances, restrictions on the books as we speak now. You about have to have permission from the government to go out and use the bathroom in your backyard. And I just don't buy, I think it's a convenient thing to say to try to get more regulation. Well, we can enforce that now with, under the existing regulation. We're gonna need new regulation. When I believe, and I'm gonna ask the county attorney to study this and get back with us, that, and, because I know I'm right on this, even if they come back and disagree with me. Bottom line is, we have so many zoning issues going on right now, on the books. You can't tell me that you could not, that you're gonna let somebody put stacks of shipping containers out there, and there's not gonna be anybody from Planning and Zoning going out there and investigating, looking at it, and using the existing codes to make sure that they're doing what folks would have to do with existing laws. But I think this is government 101 at its best, and to me, it's sad. Thank you.
Let me see if I can capture. I think we've got two taskings for the staff before we come back in. One, I'm very clear about, from Mr. Connel on setbacks. Mr. Jones, could you formulate what it is you wanted the staff to do there?
I thought I said it pretty clearly.
I just wanna understand it, so I got it. Go ahead.
You put any structure on your piece of property, Planning and Zoning has codes, they have laws on the books right now that they go out and enforce. And I just, I just don't buy it that someone can put a shipping container, that we've got to specifically say shipping container. I just don't buy that.
I think, I interpret what you said to be the same thing that Mr. Connel said. Look at, look at the setback regulation and see how that applies. That's a specific case. Is that satisfactory, Jimmy? I was trying to understand.
Do you understand what I'm talking about, Mr. Connel?
I'll go for, I mean, I'll research anything you need me to do to bring back. We've had some preliminary discussions about this. Just from my layman's reading of it, once you deregulate it, we won't have the ability to regulate it, unless I'm told otherwise by our attorneys.
Okay, well, see, that's the point that Mr. Connel said. So we're back to Mr. Connel's point, and I'd, I'd, for one, like to support Mr. Connel's point. And Jimmy, is that all right?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, I would like to ask the county attorney to take this under consideration, look at it, and formulate an opinion and give it to us.
Yeah, well, okay.
One other thing, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Bozard.
Would you mind going over your point again, please? Apparently, I didn't understand it.
Which one?
The setback.
As I, as I read the definitions, if I might, Mr. Chairman?
Right.
As I read the definitions and applications of what we say can't be in a setback area, or can't be in any particular area, by removing this regulation, we might run the risk of taking shipping containers out of that definition, if that makes sense. So we do say, to Mr. Jones's point, we do say, certain things can't be in a setback area. And if we make this change, as it's been suggested tonight, and it goes through third reading, I'm suggesting we need to look at it closely, so we don't run the risk of just not having shipping containers defined in such a way that you can say, oh, that violates one of the setback requirements. Because I think that would, that would be a terrible result, to be in a densely, say you're in a densely zoned and densely populated subdivision, and somebody decides they wanna get a shipping container. And I understand this might be an outlandish hypothetical, but you have to run with me a little bit, because that's my profession. I have to try to mitigate risk in what I do. And you run the risk of someone having a 15-to-20-foot setback for their house in a very densely zoned area, and if it does, if shipping containers aren't addressed, they could put a shipping container right next to the house and not touch the property line, but be two inches away from it. And too bad. We removed our regulation, and setback definition didn't apply.
The way the law is written now, setbacks, those inspectors that he's got working in his office, will go out there, and if they see him setback, they're gonna have to make a move. You cannot put anything in a setback.
Okay, I think we got that, Mr. Bozard. And I think, if there's more energy on this, I'd sure like to be able to ask the staff to answer these questions, as you've heard, all right? And we need a legal opinion as well. I find myself in the same court with Mr. Connel, that we need specificity, because we already have regulations that might apply here. And I wouldn't ask you, Mr. Connel, to stand up here and make a matter on the record when you're not informed by a good piece of study of all the material, okay? Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Connel stated, the issue I brought up, or the issue he brought up, might be of concern. So Mr. Connel's an attorney, and he doesn't even have a clear reading of it. I seem to think that there are ordinances on the books that they can enforce, if they want to enforce them. And I'm glad that we're gonna ask the county attorney to look at it, and I'll be glad to help you in any way I can.
Yeah, I would suggest to you that county attorney's input is essential, but Mr. Carpenter will decide how that be done as a staff matter. But I certainly agree.
It was a joke.
I'm sure. Mr. Snodgrass?
Question. On your original, on your motion, did you specify, because I know in the written part, that we would direct staff to take it to zoning commission for them to look at again, to come back for advice? Is that correct?
That's, not in my motion tonight. My amendment tonight was just to amend it as I read it, but I gave you that portion that I will introduce on the motion at third reading in public hearing next meeting.
Great, great. I'm ready to call the question, gentlemen, unless you have another question.
Just quickly, I mean, Mr. Connel's remarks does make us think, and this is, I mean, this is how county government works. This is what we have, three readings, ask these questions, because I think about, in my district, you know, if you're RD1, RD2, GD, or MRD, I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna container, that's great, that's fine. That's where Mr. Steve is zoned at. But a lot of East Camden, what I represent, is RD10, RD15, RD20. And this is a densely populated area where you just, they wouldn't have room to put a shipping container. Some places you would. So I am a little, I guess a little hesitant, knowing that if we strike this, then it's, I mean, it's Wild West. I mean, no holds bar. Go for it. I'm just thinking out loud at this point. I know that's probably, you know, so.
Well, we got staff action.
Mr. Connel gives something.
Yeah, I think, are you through with his question?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, but I just wanna make one point, Mr. Chairman. What we're doing tonight does not remove the ordinance that's on the book. So we still got chance by next reading to address any of these concerns. I mean, it's still against the law, against code right now, because we have not had a third reading and a public hearing yet. So it's not like everybody's gonna go haywire. The problem comes in and concerns is, once we do third reading, and by the time we wait for Planning and Zoning to come back to us, the problems that may have come in between that time period. But tonight, we just need to move forward.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Counselor Snodgrass, let me just say this, that, you know, HOAs are out there in a lot of these subdivisions. They have them, and they can enforce them through that. And I also say, also say, I also say they can be enforced through that, or they can establish one. And then, too, we have ordinances on the books that I just believe, I have no fear of them going wild personally, and just becoming some kind of epidemic within the county. So having said that, I'm gonna certainly support Mr. Tucker's amendment. I think it's the right thing to do.
Y'all ready to call the question?
I have just one comment.
One more question.
No, just a comment that will clarify, and it's really credit to Mr. Connel. I think he summed up what I'm trying to say the best. As we stew on this between now and next reading, that on some level, you would start to consider shipping containers as personal property. It could be a little tiny baby-sized shipping container. It could be a big old shipping container, but it might be treated as personal property. And what he's saying is, we may not have regulations that apply to personal property being set in setbacks.
Okay, very good. We have a motion, first and second, and we now have to move to a vote to the amendment, to the original motion. All those in favor of the amendment, so signify. And the amendment passes unanimously with some work, with some homework. We now have to move to the amendment, to the motion as amended. All those in favor of the motion as amended, so signify. And it's unanimous, and thank you, gentlemen. That was an excellent dialogue, and I think we learned a few things.
Yes.
We move now, and it moves on to a third reading as amended. Mary, I hope you got all that verbatim, right? All right, and that's where, it's a messy business, but we're getting it done. We move now to new business. We have four items under new business. The first one, item number one, should be up. There it is. Quotes for new fire service trucks at Tab G. All right, Mr. Carpenter, do your magic.
Mr. Chairman, Chairman members of council, you have in front of you tonight for your approval, the purchase of two fire trucks. These fire trucks were approved and included in the 2019 budget that we're curling in. The specs have been vetted and approved. The delivery of these trucks will be within 90 to 120 days, and the departments that will be the beneficiaries is Cassett and Westville.
Excellent. All right, can we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion that we approve the lowest bid.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Snodgrass, discussion. Who can be against fire trucks? All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. I always wanted to be a fireman. Number two, the second one is the outcome. We have Kyle Kelly here, thank you. The outcome of the 2019-2020 retreat we did last week. And we have the goals and objectives here at Tab H. A little bit of housekeeping first. If any of you wish to amend a single goal or objective, we're gonna do it one at a time, not by block. If you wanna change a period or paragraph, or split infinitive, and there's at least one, you can do that. But the point here is, if you wish to amend this, we'll do it line item by line item. So first of all, we'll get it on the table. Can we have a motion to approve these goals and objectives?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve our goals and objectives for 2019-2020.
Very good. A second?
Second.
Second for Mrs. Snodgrass. Did you, David?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Tucker, you wanna open it for a discussion?
Yes, sir. I just wanna start off by saying thank you to Santee Lynch and Cal for coming up and spending the day and helping us dig through this. And it just didn't happen that day, but the preparation prior to, trying to get our thoughts to you, so you can formulate this. So I say thanks and appreciate your hard work for Kershaw County. I just wanna say also that the retreat I thought was very well, and I'll have some more comments in my council briefing in reference to what I thought as far as for next year, that I think we can do a little different or a little better. But I'm acceptable to these goals that we've set and projects, and I look forward to voting on this.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll go ahead and get mine out of the way, because it makes a whole lot of sense. Let me first say that I regret my early departure right before the goal-setting portion of the retreat. I had to leave early due to a family illness. However, after reading the priorities, I'm probably glad that I wasn't there. I feel the Kershaw County Council.
I need you to make a motion now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or do you wanna go ahead and give a speech?
I'd be glad to start over.
We wanna go through them, so we can.
Yeah, and I have an amendment I'm going to make.
Okay, I'll stand by.
But you let Mr. Tucker speak without a motion. Why won't you let me speak without a motion?
Well, because you indicated you were gonna make some changes, but if you're not gonna make the changes now.
Well, I was gonna speak, and then I was gonna make an amendment when we get it on the table.
Please go ahead.
But I don't mind if you wanna go ahead and get a motion on the floor in a second.
That'd be terrific, yeah. So we can see where you're headed, yeah. Yeah, if you would.
I'm not making the motion.
Okay, good, all right.
Is anybody making a motion?
We've got a motion and a second. It's on the table.
Yeah.
Going through each goal to see what you want to change.
Okay, then, if we have a motion and a second, and you let Mr. Tucker speak, why is there an issue?
Well, I thought, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I thought you started out by saying you were gonna make an amendment. out by saying you were gonna make an amendment.
I said I was gonna make some comments.
Okay, please, go ahead.
And then I may make an amendment after my comments.
Please, go ahead.
This is as confusing as a container law. Anyway, all right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna start over. Listen, folks, I feel that Kershaw County Council goes for the fiscal year 2019, 2020 are overly ambitious, overwhelming, and non-realistic. Council has listed twelve items as high priority, fourteen items as minimum priority, and eleven items as low priority. However, what disturbs me the most is what is in the high priority list. After everything I have said and brought to council's attention about economic development over the past six months, and the loss of six hundred and four jobs, and a loss of eighty-nine million in investments, and after asking that we get with the county administrator to set realistic goals for him to achieve in 2019, 2020 in industrial jobs and investments, then I look at our high priority list, it's on the board right behind us, and right behind you, which has twelve bullet points. And I see the first thing is to form a task force to improve White Pond Road, Whiting Way, and I-20. And there's nothing wrong with this, however, that is a state DOT project, but for that to be our number one thing, I'm lost. The second item is develop recreational splash pads, starting in the city through a partnership with the city of Camden. One, how is that more important than industrial jobs and industrial recruiting, when we haven't had but twenty-five industrial jobs over the last seven years and maybe about five million dollars in investments? Two, why didn't we use the same concept we brought, when we bought the swampland, excuse me, the river park, at the river park in Lugoff? Why didn't we partner with the city of Camden over their river park? They're doing the same thing that we're doing. They're gonna be spending millions of dollars, they're gonna have identical, pretty much trails and piers and whatever, houses or community centers, but I just don't understand why we couldn't have worked together on that. And that would have been a huge success for us if we could have. One, they're not building in a floodplain, I don't believe. And then I see other items such as identify initiatives to publicly display and leverage the county's military and veterans' friendliness. I think we need to act on the county fire service plan. I think we need to do that, and we need to put that in some of the top priorities. But let me just move on, and I'll move very quickly finish here. There's another bullet point up there that says, and continue the county vehicle replacement program. Folks, that's an administrative issue. We've been doing that for eight years. Why is that a top priority on the goals for 2019-20? Folks, once again, we are not focusing on industry, jobs, and investment, which we need to and which should be our first priority. I will not support the draft of the Kershaw County Council goes for fiscal year 2019-2020. What I propose is that we only have three high priorities that are realistic, five medium priorities, and seven low priorities. I would start by putting economic development as a number one high priority, and fire service as a number two, and SROs as a number three. By focusing on three critical areas, we can focus our county's efforts and accomplishments. And I think these are important tasks in bringing good jobs to our citizens and protecting their property and the students of Kershaw County, which are our future. Only then should we focus on other issues after we accomplish those. So, having said that, Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and make the motion that we only have three high priorities, five medium priorities, and seven low priorities. And the three priorities that are high will be realistic in my view. And I would start by putting economic development as number one, high priority, the fire service as number two, and the SROs as number three. That would be my amendment.
All right, we have an amendment, we have a second? There is no second, the motion dies, we move to another.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your time, and thank you, members of county council.
Mr. Tucker, you have an amendment? I do have a clarification, can I just ask for a minute?
Yes, sir.
I think when this came to us from Kyle Kelly, if you look on page two, items for future discussion, I think we need a little explanation of why that's that way. If, I'll just hold up. I think we need a little explanation as to the formatting here, because it seems to me this ought to be rolled into low priority. Mr. Kelly, you created a little issue here for us, can you come up and explain the last
No, it's not.
Nope.
No.
You blew it out. All right, we'll see, Danny will do his magic. Thank you, you take mine. Not to hold up, I'm gonna explain that to us, go ahead, please.
The, so, in evaluating the goal setting, during the county, I did replace one of the council members receiving colored dots to identify their individual priorities, the two items that are listed in this discussion received no votes, no dot preference by a council member, in part because there was a limited number of dots, you have scarce number of items being replaced or preferred on. So, those two items received no.
No preference, whereas the low priority items received at least one indication from a council member that they were a priority.
Yeah. I would suggest that someone put them up there, we just ran out of dots, and if it's a low priority, we could just roll these in together if somebody wants to make that amendment later on in the discussion. But I did want to point that out to you. Mr. Tucker, I interrupted you, go ahead.
Well, while Mr. Cal's up there, it is my understanding, when we were going through this, and it just hadn't started this year since you've been facilitating, and even when USC did it, these are not in any type of priority order in their categories. Am I correct by saying that?
They are, the order you see is the order of the, of those individual preferences. So, while they're categorized in a way that those breaks are, the breaks between the three categories are natural breaks.
Right.
In those numerical order. But within those priorities, it's like splitting hairs to rate them one over another.
Yeah, so, I mean, you just put them on a piece of paper, and we go at them, they're all high priorities, and we can start from the bottom or the middle, or do it like a bag of popcorn, just shake it up and pull out of it.
Yep.
Okay? Now, my other point.
Same as last year.
Right, yeah, that's the system we've used. Now, to Mr. Jones's point here, with not approving this, how many of those goals and objectives are yours, Mr. Jones? Because you didn't turn your sheet in.
You're exactly right, I had to leave early.
No, no, this was prior to the meeting.
Exactly, and that's why I brought them tonight. And I took your list that y'all presented and was handed out to everybody, the ones that y'all did.
Yes, sir.
You guys, the county council, I took that information, and I went and went through it, and I made my priorities, which I have the right to do.
Oh, I'm not doubting that, but what I'm saying.
And everything I did here tonight is correct and right.
If you put yours up on that board where Mr. Cal can have it, where we can put the dots, then we'll have a chance to prioritize yours into this list as well. But that wasn't turned in. So, the process.
This is strictly.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Tucker, what you're saying makes no sense whatsoever.
Well, it makes quite a sense to me.
You understand exactly what I'm saying. I took the goals that this county council put up here, because I had to leave due to a family illness. I took the goals that you guys put up here, because there are some good things, such as economic development, fire service, SROs. I just don't think SROs should be in the medium range. I don't think fire service should be low. I don't think that economic development should be low. I think they should be the top three. And I think when you have as many as we have up there, it becomes mind-boggling. And so, I made my amendment, and I recognized the three priorities that I have.
Okay, well, I'm gonna move on also, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make the point that we do this because our budget dictates what the administrator can and will be able to do. You can have all the pipe dreams and the things that you want, but if we don't fund it from up here, it won't get done. He does not have a checkbook that he can write personal checks out to run this county. So, something as simple as vehicle, vehicles, yeah, it sounds simple, but if we don't fund it from up here, there's no way he can make it happen. So, that's why we do this, and your goals and objectives follow your funding, which helps us to make sure that we get our budget right for 2019-2020.
Let me ask, make a couple of points here, Mr. Jones, and I'll get to you.
All right, thank you.
During the period where Mr. Jones was absent, which was in the morning, the city of Camden strongly suggested that we pursue the water park, and strongly recognize the collateral benefit of having their park and the park that we have on the west bank at US one. In fact, he said they entertain two different purposes. So, as a whole, and maybe we can take some time to back brief you, Mr. Jones, on what you missed by not being there in the morning. And then, secondly, Mary, did you get priorities from all council members? And if so, who did you not get one from?
Um, I got from everyone.
Okay, so, the first time we're seeing it is tonight. Mr. Jones, I'm concerned that your priorities are not being received in time for this body to operate on in the time that we all agreed that we would operate on them. I see that your three priorities are in here, and we want to make sure the 10,000 people that you represent, voices are heard even though you weren't there to express it. So, how do you propose that we put those down?
Well, let me make some clarification on some of your comments and Mr. Tucker's comments, which I found interesting. One, you say that, Mr. Tucker, that we have to put the rotation of vehicles on the retreat list or the wish list because we're gonna put it in the budget. We don't put every single budget item on our priority list for our retreat. That's an administrative issue, and I stand by that. And, Mr. Chairman, when you talk about the city of Camden Water Park, you know, that they came to us, why didn't we go to them when we started developing the river park for all this amount of money that we were gonna put into it? Because we're doing the same thing, exactly duplicate of what they're doing, pretty much. Step by step, we're just, we're putting the same thing in over in a flood zone. And, you know, when you talk about me not being there, while I was there, I had one of my children at home was sick, and I was late getting there because my wife had to go into work, and I don't mind telling the public that. And I also left early because he was still there by himself, so I left. But I tried to make an effort to get there, and I spent a couple of hours there. And I went to Ms. Mary, and I asked her to give me a list of the priorities, and she did, and I got them. And I accepted y'all's list, and I actually am working off your priorities, Mr. Chairman. I'm working off your priorities, Mr. Tucker. For y'all to sit there and to absolutely try to dismiss what I've done or what I'm trying to present here tonight is just unfortunate. Because, wait, I'm not finished.
Go ahead, please.
Because, bottom line, everything that I mentioned in my report tonight and in my list of priorities are right up here on this board, there's no difference. So, they weren't blindsided, I'm just, I have different priorities than they do. I happen to think that if we need two ambulances, and we're gonna take $400,000 and put it into the river park on the shelf for the future needs, that we should buy those two ambulances first. That's where we differ. That's where we, I'm not finished, I see you getting ready to say something. That's where we differ. When I see a list of priorities, and I see green space, green space, green space, green space, and I have sat here for six months, and I have identified two phony companies on our webpage, private confidential companies, that totaled 200 jobs and $10 million worth in investment and did not exist. I did not get one, I don't want to thank you from my colleagues up here, but when I did not get a single acknowledgement for recognizing this being done, it was as if it didn't matter. And then they want to sit up here tonight and try to discredit me because I had a sick child at home, and I only got to spend a few hours at the retreat. Unbelievable. But I'm gonna tell you something. He talked about the 10,000 people I represent, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I represent 63,000 or whatever people in this county. I don't represent just my district, and I've been doing it going on 13 years. Whether you're in my district or not, if you call me, I'm there. I work for you. I don't work for politicians and bureaucrats. And they're attacking me tonight, and that's okay, I can handle it. That's what the people elected me for, to stand up and be a voice. And I will be a voice for what I think is right. I don't think they did anything wrong, I just don't agree with them. But because I don't agree with them, they want to try to personally discredit me and tear me down. Well, I'm not here to do that to them. I just don't agree with their priorities, I don't believe, I just don't, and I don't mean to laugh, you can't make this up. To me, it's just that ridiculous. But anyway, I'm not finished.
I'll get to you in a minute.
But I'm gonna tell you something. Everything that I said in my report, I just said I would start with putting economic development priorities first. What is, why are we so upset about that? And then I said I would put the fire service second, because we made a commitment to the people in Kershaw County that we were gonna complete something. And let me tell you about that promise we made to the people in Kershaw County, the commitment. And this can be twisted and spun any way they want to spin it, but we made a commitment that we were gonna do a referendum question, we were gonna study the fire service, we were gonna do some questions and put it on a referendum for the people to tell us what they thought, get some feedback from the folks. And then SROs. Boy, that, I won't go into all of it, that is a nightmare. We, on this council, screwed that up. We total, we messed that up. We were funding SROs for 12, whatever, years. Then all of a sudden, we figured out, well, hey, if we can dump the SROs on the school district, switch them over to them, free up our $750,000, and we got money, we can put that somewhere else and have the school district create a new millage or find the funding to do the SROs. And they can giggle, smirk, laugh at what I'm saying, but they know I'm saying the truth, they know I'm speaking the truth. And I will stand up for what I think is right. But to personally attack me for not being there this weekend when I was there, and I think is just very unfortunate. But those are my three focuses, and the three things that I focused on came from your list. All right, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, we move on. Back to the rules of the House, we agreed was line item changes. I want to first say that I would like to agree with the councilman, but he is making false statements. That is just, it just goes beyond the time available to address those points. We return to the discipline of this House and to see if there are further amendments on a line item basis. I suggested that we take the last two, and I would ask if there would be an amendment that would take the last items for future discussion and roll those into the low priority. Is there such an amendment or a motion? Okay? Okay, they stay there? Now, any other items for motion? Mr. Connel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one under low priority, forgive my count, this is one, two, three down. We've got developed strategic plan for US one corridor eligible to Lugoff. Given that. Given that is the most densely populated area in the county and the fastest growing, and I think the one regarding East Camden is in the right place, I'd suggest that we move it to at least a medium priority to account for the residential and hopefully economic development growth that will happen in that area. Just as an example of.
Let's make the motion.
Oh, sure, I'll make the motion.
Which one is it, please?
So that is the motion, the third bullet point down, develop strategic plan for US-1 corridor Elgin to Lugoff. Yeah, my motion is we move it up to medium priority.
Okay, can we have a second?
Second.
Second, from, is that you, David? Can't hear you.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. A second, any discussion? Go ahead, Ben, please.
Sure. With everything we have going on at the White Pond Road 20 exit, you're aware of the asphalt plant, Ernest Health making a move there, Love Chevrolet coming in, and the additional residential growth, I think the entire White Pond Road, Highway 1 corridor is important for us to try to get ahead of. And yes, some of those are DOT projects and funds, but we, through the CM COG, worked on commissioning the Westwatery Transportation Study. And if we don't speak up, none of these projects will ever happen. I've seen the queue of DOT-funded projects, and we are way down the list. And the only way you can get ahead of another project is if you can show matching funds or an exigent or emergency circumstance. And I'm not quite saying we have an emergency yet, but you better believe that White Pond Road and 20, additional economic development is going to come. I think, I think paying attention to infrastructure in that area is actually a economic development move because it won't be too long before a hotel or something like that comes, maybe another restaurant or two. So, you know, I'd appreciate your consideration there.
Other discussion. Now, Mr. Tucker, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Conell, as much as I would love to support your amendment and move it up to a higher priority, which I think it needs to go, I believe in the process that we took and what Cal came up with from our votes. We had that opportunity to speak to that with our dots, and we didn't. So I'm going to not support this tonight and support the process that we did because what I don't want to get in the habit of doing is rearranging what our priorities are during the retreat after the fact.
Let me ask a question in deference to both of you. The first item under the high priorities is the task force on White Pond Road and Whiting Way. It's not because it's first, it's not top priority, but it's in the high priority column. Ben, is that inside your construct of how you made that motion?
I mean, that's part of how I view it. I view that as a very high priority, and I would say going from Elgin to Lugoff is right up there with it, but I'd be satisfied if we place it at a medium priority. Listen, I know a matter, a lot of this is just a matter of degree, but I think there's precedence, Mr. Tucker, for adjusting these goals. I remember, I think we had one or two votes last year where if a goal didn't seem realistic, we moved it or adjusted it. And, you know, I'm just shooting from the hip.
I'm going to say, I don't remember that.
Well, you know, I'm pretty new at it, so a lot of it seems fresh to me. And I recall doing that and thinking, oh, okay, we can adjust our goals, which I think is a healthy thing.
Yes, sir.
But I also believe this is part of the process tonight. So if you're persuaded by the positions and arguments I've made, you know, so be it. I hope it works. But if not, you know, we'll continue pushing. But I know this much.
Yes.
If we don't focus on these road projects, even if they're state-funded, they will never happen.
And you're absolutely right. And that doesn't say that we can't reach down from high to low to medium as, you know, time or opportunity dictates because we've done that before. We just haven't moved them off the list and shuffled them around.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Please respond.
Just last point is, I've found in my short times serving in government that a lot of times, opportunity is made by the power of your will. So if you can almost will something to happen and show someone that's important and gather some matching funds and demonstrate the data that supports it, you can actually get something done. So with that, that's all I have to share, Mr. Chairman.
Now, let me just go back to infrastructure for a minute. We've already addressed sewer issues out there, and I'm really happy with the way that's developing. But if you go to this Westwatery Transportation Study that you, Ben, I, and others, and Mayor Emmons slaved over, much of that is in the high priority as expressed to that other COG, the CM COG in Richland that controls transportation money. It would not be inconsistent.
Mr. Chairman.
To move it from a low to a high priority or a low to a medium priority is a motion that's before the table right now. Other discussion? Yeah, Mr. Bozard. I'm sorry, David.
Mr. Conell, on the other end of that road that we're discussing here, going out the other way through Palmetto Asphalt and so forth, going out to White Pond's Road, we've got noticed that maybe there might be a truck stop going out there. Would you like to amend your motion to include that also?
No, I think that's already addressed in what we discussed. That's White Pond Road adjacent to Whiting Way and Highway 20. What we're talking about right now is Highway 1 from Elgin to Lugoff.
Oh, just Elgin, okay.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, David, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, Ben, I'll support, I'll support this move, just kind of in good faith, not that I'm, because I do feel like the whole Highway 1 corridor needs to be a focus. However, I do want to point out that I specifically asked for the East Camden part of the corridor because Elgin, Elgin gets natural attention because you're so close to the Columbia sprawl that it just gets natural attention. I'm hoping that what can remain a medium and a high priority goal is Highway 1 in East Camden because it is one of the most densely populated, unincorporated areas of our county. And I believe that has gone under such neglect over the last few years that I believe as we give attention to it, that it too has a lot of potential to have a lot of development. So I'm definitely, I'm definitely with you of kind of moving your side up to kind of be, to be even at the same, but at the same time, just want to make it clear that that was my goal to put in there to make sure that East Camden finally got its fair shake and kind of a fair deal at the county table. And excited about that. I'll share more of that probably in my remarks, but I have another motion that I'll make, and I'm assuming we'll need to get past this one as far as moving our priority.
Ready to call the question? All right, let's move to a vote on this amendment. All those in favor of the amendment to move item number three on the Elgin-US-1 Lugoff corridor to a medium priority signify by raising your hand. It's Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Burns, Mr. Bozard, Mr. Jones, Mr. Conell. All those opposed. It's Mr. Tucker, and it passes. Other amendments? You said you had one, Mr.?
Yeah, I would, would it be out of order to entertain a motion? Mr. Jones, yours and my delivery system is not exactly the same, but you did say something that, that.
What's your motion, and then we'll talk about it.
Okay, I'll make a motion we move SRO to high priority.
Okay.
Second.
And we have a second for Mr. Jones. Discussion from you, sir.
Yeah, just, honestly, that was kind of oversight on my, on my part. I just, when I, when we do these goals, I just, I didn't take them just in one particular order. For me, this was just a way for county to kind of get these on the board, and it's not that the first one is the most important and the last one is the last important. It was just, hey, let's get this on the board so staff can know what we're thinking about from a policy standpoint on how to begin to create, to create the budget. So I didn't mean to miss the SRO. I mean, we definitely know that's important and looking forward to having a discussion on that. So that would be my motion.
Other discussion?
I would like to.
Yeah, go ahead, Jimmy.
Mr. Councilman Snodgrass, let me just tell you, thank you very much. You're a good man, and I know that. Politics is a different world, but bottom line is you're a tough guy. But thank you so much for recognizing that and making that motion, and I was honored.
I just didn't want the other stuff to go away.
Let Mr. Jones finish, please. Mr. Snodgrass?
Sorry, I apologize.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
You don't need to apologize to me. There's nothing wrong with us having a little bit of conversation up here.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Chairman, relax.
No, go ahead.
Just relax.
Mr. Jones, go right ahead.
Just relax, please, sir.
Go right ahead.
You relax.
Go right ahead.
You relax. All right. But anyway, thank you so much, Councilman Snodgrass, for that motion. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tucker?
For the same reasons, Mr. Snodgrass, I stated to Councilman Conell, I will be standing my same position.
Yeah, Ben, please, go ahead.
I'd support it to the extent it means we want to emphasize to the state government that they should make true on their promise of having an SRO in every school and funding it. To the extent these goals mean we match them up with funding, you know, I don't know. I just remember the state, the governor's race saying that he was going to fund SROs in every school, and I hope it wasn't just political speech, but that they actually make true on that promise.
I didn't see it in the, I'll comment on that. It's not in the House budget. I have not seen it submitted by the governor, so it's so far not in substance in any one of the finance committees in the House or the Senate, okay?
Again.
But there has been a discussion, as we shared before, but let me just back up again. And maybe I should have said this upfront, Mr. Tucker knows the deal, and that is, we're not here today to do the finance part of this. We have now months of budget meetings that include, one, an aggressive economic development plan, two, SROs, and on and on and on. So just like at the State House, it doesn't mean anything until we put money against it, which is the next step. But it's important to know where you're going before you go there. So that was a whole deal about doing goals and objectives. Who wanted to say something?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
What you just said, I totally agree with, the last part of it. Thank you.
Others?
Well, I just, you know, just to be, just to, we're all clear that this is just a, for us to, to work with the school district, because we all know, because Act 388, this is really, I mean, we don't dump it on the school board. That's, I mean, obviously, that's, that's their expense, but I am open to making it a priority to work with them to make it, you know.
Ready to call the question here? All right, we have a motion to move the SRO officer in school safety plan from medium to a high priority. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's Mr. Jones, Conell, Mr. Bozard, Burns, and Mr. Snodgrass opposed. Mr. Gardner and Mr. Tucker, for reasons already stated. Okay, it passes. So we have two amendments, and let me just make sure I got them.
Could you restate those two amendments?
Strategic plan for US-1 corridor, and the second one, I mean, that goes to medium, and the second one is SROs to high. Other amendments? Seeing there are none?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment that we take an aggressive economic development plan. We are setting goals for the administrator for the next year coming up, that we put that as a number one item.
We set, so I'm going to restate that and make sure I got it right. Set plans for the, no, goals for the administrator as a part of the economic plan.
Correct.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Snodgrass seconds it. Mr. Jones, you want to lead discussion?
I think it speaks for itself. You know, we've had.
Other discussion?
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
We, we've had our heads buried in the sand for the last seven, seven-plus years, and I think that it's only reasonable that we set some guidelines and goals that we'd like to see achieved in the year coming up. I think it would be fair to the public. I think they deserve that as well because we've had no success. And when you talk about, when we sit here and talk about my numbers or my comments not being correct, that was said by members of these county council, of this county council, when I was giving those reports, but then the next day, they came off the webpage. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Another discussion. Mr. Snodgrass, you seem to be on board?
I think goals and objectives are always, are always good, as long as they're realistic and, you know, keep the, my second was not to say that I'll agree with every goal that Mr. Jones will put out, but it seemed like a.
Okay, Mr. Snodgrass. Mr. Jones, go right ahead.
First off, I have said that from the very beginning that they should always be realistic. And second off, I don't think you have to justify why you support me on an issue. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Ah, Mr. Gardner. I think it's already in the high priority. It says develop a more aggressive economic development marketing program. It's already in high priority. I don't know that we need to, you know. Reinvent this. Mr. Tucker, go ahead.
I want more clarity. I mean, this is kind of broad and vague, so.
Yeah, I can give some clarity.
Okay, please.
I would. You talk about broad and vague. Tell me about everything you've got written up there. Everything up there is vague. I mean, there's nothing really specific. And when we talk about setting the goals, I mean, we sit down and we talk, we have a work session with the county administrator. We sit down and we tabulate some goals and things that we'd like to see them achieve this coming year in economic development to maybe give some direction to try to have some success. Because for whatever reason, we're just not able to close the deal. We've got a $2 million building sitting up there. We've got a lot of work that we've done. We've got a $17.2 million bond that's going to cost us $31 million over 30 years of time. So we've invested money. We paid an expert to come here and paid her $5,000, and she spoke for an hour and told us that we were great, but yet she never answered my questions when I was there. And why is it so complicated to understand that we, the administrator is our employee? The other employees don't work for us. Why is it so complicated? Something as simple as just set some goals for him. He cannot develop when you haven't had any success. So I don't understand why we're making this so complicated. And, excuse me, and you know as well as I know, Councilman Tucker, Vice Chairman Tucker, you do know, you know what you're doing, and you know exactly what you're asking me, and you know that all we've got to do is sit down in a work session, come up with some goals for the administrator in economic development and move forward. And I'm talking about realistic goals within the next year. Look at how much we've lost. Look at how much we've had taken off our website that we had up there, 604, 89.9 million. And I was told those numbers were wrong. The same thing, Mr. Jones has got his numbers wrong. I don't agree with his figures. We have created 500 jobs. Where they're gone, they were never filled.
Mr. Tucker?
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Well, I think you made my point exactly. These goals and objectives I've here has been discussed, and there's been a lot of dialogue. So that's why I'm wanting, if you want to do this, you're right.
You put dots on a board.
Hold on, time, 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 time.
We had three hours of doubt.
Yeah. There was seriously time spent in dialogue and our good, healthy hours down there and staff going over these objectives and goals. And if you want something for the administrator, we can work on it in the work sessions. I don't have a problem having that conversation and that dialogue, but to put this on this list from the retreat, I think it's inappropriate and not, and not where it goes. Because if that was, then we should have listed once again in the requests we got from Santee Lynch's, and then it would have been on the bulletin, on those boards so we could prioritize them. And I say that because, you know, we're going away from the process, and I'm not into going away from the process. We went through this. This is what we said we're going to do. Now, whether we vary a little bit within, but to add stuff and move stuff, I'm not, I'm not on board tonight.
Mr. Chairman.
Let's see, anybody else? Mr. Jones, go ahead.
First, I don't think we're adding. I think we're just, we're just having a discussion, and we're getting to the nuts and boats of what we'd like to see out of some of the things that are captioned up here. I do want to say one thing to you personally, Mr. Tucker, directly. Look me straight in the eye, my friend. You are very consistent. You're very passionate about what you believe. I just don't believe in the same things you do. However, I do respect you.
Same here.
You've always been very polite, and I appreciate that as well.
Okay, any other discussion?
Thank you.
Mr. Bozard?
Please, thank you. I want to ask Mr. Carpenter a question. We're discussing this development, county-wide community economic development plan with a focus on commercial and real estate initiatives. a focus on commercial and real estate initiatives, is that correct?
That was one of the items, yes, sir.
Would you explain that to me, please?
What, you mean talking about the executive session?
No, right here.
Uh, in the high priority, where are you?
On number, uh...
It's like number...
In the high priority.
Okay.
What, what that was, Mr. Bozard, was, we had discussed putting some focus in the county's efforts on attracting retail and commercial growth, 6% growth, if you use that term.
Thank you. Now, I have another question. What is the function of the Economic Development Office?
Industrial growth.
Sir?
Industrial growth.
Okay.
Yeah, wait a minute now, hold, hold on a minute.
Okay, well, go ahead, I'm just waiting.
How, how, I'm trying to figure out, Mr. Chairman, how we gonna get here? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Okay.
How we, how are we gonna do this? We gonna have, get another committee, or what are we gonna do? Put extra work on the economic development office?
Let me, let me impose there. As I said at the retreat, we're gonna have an executive session on part of that tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll hush, thank you.
No, no, but, but then there's a second issue, is we have a work session during the budget session to get at particulars of that plan going forward.
Well, I was just confused whether we were gonna put another committee together to do this, or...
We're gonna do it during the budget cycle.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Okay, I'm, I'm ready to call the question, but let me first say that it is absolutely false that we've lost jobs, we're at full employment in this county, you got, or higher signs everywhere, we've had increase in our net-net on the Philo funding line of several million dollars. So I want the people out here in this group and on this board to know that I challenge the repeated discussion of taking an isolated point and saying that economic development has not grown. It is demonstrably wrong. Now with that, we move to a vote. All of those in favor of the amendment to the goals and objectives to specify goals and objectives for economic development for the administrator signify by raising your hand. We have Mr. Snodgrass and Mr. Jones, all those opposed signify, and it's Mr. Conell, Mr. Burns, Mr. Bozard, Mr. Gardner, and Mr. Tucker, and the motion fails. Uh, other motions? Are we ready to move on to the final vote? We have three, two amendments, strategic, the, let me see if I got this right. Strategy, the one, Mr. Conell's amendment to develop, to move the US-1 Elgin-Lugoff corridor to medium priority has passed in the first motion, and the second we'll be voting on is moving SROs to high priority. All in favor of the goals and objectives as amended signify by raising your hand. And we have Mr. Conell, Mr. Bozard, and Mr. Burns.
I don't think we got a motion in a second, did we? We gotta, okay, we gotta back up.
Oh, yeah. All those in favor of those, of, I need that, no?
No, no, no. I make the motion that we adopt the amendments to our goals and objectives as stated.
That's right. Thank you. A second from Mr. Conell.
Now.
Discussion, there is none, move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Tucker, thank you, Sammy.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gardner, Mr. Burns, Mr. Bozard, and Mr. Conell, all those opposed. Mr. Jones, and the motion passes, and the goals and objectives are passed as written and as amended. We move now to item number three, Heritage Point Two landscape and irrigation bid. It's a tab I, and on the board, Mr. Carpenter, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we have in front of you the low bid being requested for approval tonight by council for the landscaping, the irrigation of the Heritage Point Two spec building, a low bid of smoke irrigation for $41,225.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve the said bid for the lowest bidder.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bozard, any discussion? Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Carpenter, how many square feet are we talking about here?
Um, Pete, do you? That's 25,000 square feet of sod and a comparable amount of grass seed, okay.
Irrigation system?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Full-up irrigation, okay, very good question. Uh, comments?
Quick comment.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. What is our total that we have spent so far on the industrial sites?
I think we can...
If I don't have it with me at the moment, I can get it for you, Mr. Jones.
This money's coming out of the bond.
Yes, sir.
As I said, this money's coming out of the bond. Where, how about this, where are we at with the bond? Is it five million, six million?
No, sir, we're much closer to four million.
Four million, okay. With this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Others? Okay, we're ready to move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, Mary, move to item number four, proposal for 2019 countywide aerial ortho express imagery service. A tab J, this sounds like what I used to do in Bosnian. Uh, Mr. Carpenter, can you explain this, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, the last time we did overflight of the county was in 2015. We are looking to do a new aerial overflight of the county. The reassessment starts this coming year, so we need to get up-to-date aerials on the books. You have to do those in winter in order to get the best overflight, because an adjacent county is also doing one, we can get a discount if we go with them. So we're requesting that we go ahead and do the overflight now, and then we can pay it out of the next two budgets.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make the motion that we approve the aerial photography.
All right, Sammy, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bozard, any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Sammy, go right ahead.
Um, Mr. Carpenter, what you think an estimate cost is gonna be on this?
It's gonna be $46,000 total.
Okay, so that, um, the 3,500 is not...
I'm sorry?
That 3,500 on there is not gonna be included?
No, sir, that's, the state will pay, pay that 3,500 for the three-band infrared that they'll be getting.
Okay, thank you.
We don't use that ourself.
Okay.
Say again the price, please.
$46,000.
Yeah. Other discussion, Mr. Gardner?
Who else uses this information, just the county?
Uh, it's our GIS, so everybody...
GIS users?
City, county, the state, realtors.
Do we charge those folks to use this information since we're putting the bill for it?
It depends on how, it depends on how they request it from us. If they go online, we don't. So anybody uses it online, it's, it's available for everybody. If they request actual data from the county, then there's a cost for it.
I think a number of years ago, that it was 90,000 to do this.
It was.
Uh, and I know the city uses a lot of that for their sewer and those sorts of things. Is this not something that we could partner with them to get them to pay for part of this?
Um, for the city itself, to my knowledge, we haven't. It's the whole county, you can't, you can't not take the city when you're taking the county. So we can certainly request they do it, but if we do it, we have to for all of the county.
Oh, I understand. I'm just looking for ways to save some money.
Yes, sir.
Since, since, since there are other entities that use it, I know several years ago that the Chamber used this as well and sold maps off of it for profit, and I requested that they make a contribution towards it, they didn't like that very much, but, uh, but still, you know, we foot the bill for it, and, uh, I don't know why we couldn't ask for at least a, a small portion.
Like I said, depending on, on how they request the data from us, then we do charge.
No problem.
Very good. Others? All right. No further discussion, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and it's pretty clever there, Mr. Carpenter, thank you, it passes. We move to council briefings, and it begins with you, Ben, please.
Oh, just two things. Of course, I'm, I'm a little biased towards wrestling as a local high school sport, but I wanted to congratulate Lugoff Elgin High School for winning their region. Long tradition of stout wrestling performance there, and then North Central's athletic program, their coaches and assistant coach, Coach Brazel, and also Coach Jeremy should be commended, they finished second in the state as a team. The team competition happens right before you have individuals coming up in the next few weeks, but it's the best they've ever performed in the state. It's a real credit to the program, the parents, and the school district in supporting that program, who are just forming young men through trials that will prepare them for the rest of their lives. Once you've been out there in spandex under, in the light for an extended period of your athletic career, not much else can bother you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Chairman, I have no report tonight.
All right, very good. Mr. Snodgrass?
I just wanted to thank the staff for doing a great job of organizing a wonderful retreat for us.
Yep.
It was the first one that I was able to be a part of, and I think those are important. As organizations I've been a part of before, it's, it's always good to, to get your goals out there so you can know where you're going, and so I appreciate that. Appreciate, council, you're helping me out, getting some, some things that have been important to me on, on, on the radar. A lot of folks in East Camden have just made several comments to me that, for the first time in a long time, they've, they've just heard those two words mentioned together in paper and, and other goals and objectives, and that's East Camden. So, thank you so much. In fact, I told my council members at the retreat, I said, "My goal in these next four years is for you to get tired of me saying East Camden." So, I really appreciate that. And I, I do want to just say to, to Vic and his staff, you guys do a great job. I know we, we had, we just kind of got finished with a, with a lively discussion about some things, but just wanted to reiterate that I believe you do a great job. And I, and I know that economic development is a tricky thing, there are, there are successes that we'll never see, just because of the nature of what economic, economic development is, but just wanted to, just to reiterate that, just keep on, keep on keeping on.
Yeah, Mr. Tucker?
Uh, thank you. Just want to dovetail a little bit on what Councilman Snodgrass said, and give you a little bit of my feedback from the retreat. Awesome job from staff, from Ms. Mary and Danny and Vic. I thought, in my personal opinion, that our, something about department heads got slighted. What do I mean by that? It was a long day Saturday, it was real long. Didn't mind staying, but our administrator had to amend the schedule just so we could stay in the timeframe that we stayed in. So I'm recommending all of you, unless, you know, God sees different, we'll be here next year, that we maybe talk about a two-day retreat where we start that Friday early afternoon, and then go into Saturday. So, because it's important to hear from our department heads and our elected officials, and it's not just what they're requesting, but what they have accomplished over this past budget year and where they're at. So, um, that's my seed that I'm sowing tonight, and we'll be bringing that back up as we get out of this budget year coming up into the new year, and I hope that you would consider that. The other thing that I'd like to say, that I'm, I've had conversation with the administrator and also our economic development director, Ms. Peggy, gonna be looking to see if we can maybe reboot our economic development committee, so I'll be getting some feedback and input from all of you, and we're gonna see can we get that maybe restructured in a very positive way. And her problem was, we didn't show up for meetings. I'm just gonna put it out there. The people that was sitting on that board didn't show up, and she felt that she wasn't being productive with that group, so it, she didn't dissolve it, it dissolved itself. So, um, keep that in mind, that I will be bringing that up and proposing that to my colleagues. That concludes my report.
Uh, Mr. Gardner?
Uh, briefly, Ben, kind of stalled my thunder on the North Central wrestling team. That's okay, that's okay. Uh, I'd like to thank Chris for his report on how important that EMS station that we built on the border of the county is. That's a testament, and I thank my colleagues for, you know, putting that there. We have another one going up in Lugoff now that is vital to the services of our, our people in, in our county, and, but, but thank, thank you, Chris, for showing us how important that is to those people in that end of the county. Thank you.
Al?
Thank you, sir. Since our last retreat, I have been going through the 208 pages on the survey that the, uh, excuse me, planning and zoning had. I'm on page 60 right now. There is some very good comments that the citizens of Kershaw County gave us. At the same time, there were some very hurtful and meaningful comments also. However, we asked for it, so we gotta live with the good and the bad. So we welcome the comments, whether they're good or bad, so don't, don't be afraid of what I just said there. Some of the, um, comments, and Mr. Carpenter and I talked just a little bit ago before the meeting started about this, we seem to have a problem in our county with some signs. Some's not allowing big enough, and some of them, and I come to find out that the ordinance from Mr. Michael, I mean, Conley, has changed a couple of years back, that we are using and can use bigger signs now, out on the interstate and so forth. So that's one issue that's, that's been taken care of. But the biggest thing throughout that survey that I found so far on my 60 pages is that we aren't keeping the people informed. The people really don't know what's going on in the county. And they talk about, um, transportation studies, out on 601 and then Elgin, we had two of them. One of them is partially funded, and one of them is not, no money's in the other one yet. So that's, that's one thing, and the redoing, what Mr. Ben talked about earlier, US-1, that was one of the studies we done, that's one no money's for yet. If, um, do we have that on the internet, Mr. Conley? Is that available to the people, these questions, I mean, these surveys? I would suggest that y'all want to get some good education, read it. But they talk about new zoning to protect eyesores. They talk about removal of junk trash and so forth out people's yards. You know, we can only do so much. We talk about ordinance trying to eliminate a lot of trash, we're dealing with people that own land. They talk about lights off the interstate coming in off of US-90, exit 98 and 92, and need lights out there. They talk about, why don't we have some clean community, um, com, uh, committee? We do have one. We need to put out the information who this committee is, Mr. Carpenter, so if anybody's got these issues, they can come or read it someplace and let them know that we do have a beautiful case, uh, committee. It's called a clean community, is what name of it is. There's a lot of things here, and I said, we're not keeping the people informed. And maybe we're dropping our ball on that. Maybe we need to do a better job in keeping the, the people informed. They talk about build industrial parks. Apparently, the people don't know that we've got, how many parks? Five? Is it five? Three? Okay, I'm sorry. Three industrial parks already. And again, Mr. Carpenter, that's what I'm talking about, maybe we have not been doing our job in, in form and keeping the people informed. It's a lot. One fellow said in there, "Economic development is not a function of government." I'm in the process right now of reading a Democracy Unfolded book written by some educated people here in South Carolina, by all South Carolinians, that said the same thing. Said that government needs to get out of Economic Development Office. Now, whether that's so or not, I'm gonna let somebody smarter than me talk about that. But this is comments that you, the citizens of Kershaw County, is in that survey. Like I said again, if you want to see some good reading, go read it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. I'll close it out, and then we'll hear from administrator and attorney. Uh, yeah, high school sports, it's the best thing in the world, terrific, we've watched basketball and, and wrestling, and we're now into the spring ball, both for high school, and I would encourage everybody also, if you've got children, to sign up for the rec department. I think it's been extended until, I think, another week or so, but that's for spring ball conducted by the rec department. Uh, I direct your attention back to the minutes we just approved, in which I, it was stated by Didi Caldwell that we're on the right track in economic development, and if anything, we need to be more aggressive, and that is what we're about. And that begins with an executive session we're soon to have, and also the budget sessions to follow. And you've seen the passion that's associated with providing the resources we need so we can provide the services that our children and our families need. We're all about that, nobody's against it, it's just how to get there. I would also ask you to look at what Kyle Kelly and Mike Conley have done with Vision 2030. This thing is standing the test of time. We're into our third year with this, it's not even three years old yet. It won All-America County, it won national level recognition, and we promised the citizens that every year, we'd take a hard look at how we're doing, measure progress from the previous year, and then write the goals and objectives that you just heard us within, with passion, I would say, argue about. And now this turns into the next step, which is the budget process. Doesn't mean anything if there's no money placed against it, so we now move into the budget process. Boy, you want to see some fun, come to that. And then we'll come in here and do three readings and a public hearing, and we come out the other end, and it'll be really interesting. I'm really looking forward to it. But this is a part of our contract with the county. Every city in this county voted on it in favor, the Chamber of Commerce did, the school district did, and a number of other civic organizations voted in favor of this. And this is standing the test of time, and I congratulate Mike and Kyle and all members of the core team, past, present, and future, who helped us get that done. Lastly, it, it, it... Lastly, it pains me a little bit, and the chairman, to have to say this, but process shouldn't drive out product, and we want to hear from everybody. And as chairman, I've, I've been also asked to be mindful of the time that some of these men up here have. Some of us are businessmen, and some of us lead these proceedings and proceed all over the world tonight. And it, I am mindful that we have to produce the best product for our county and let every voice be heard, but at the same time respectful of the process. It allows every voice to be heard, but it also allows us to be respectful of people's time. And on that basis, I would ask that you make sure, Mike, that the Planning and Zoning Committee doesn't take these comments up here wrongly. We greatly appreciate the volunteers in all these committees, the Clean Committee, Clean Community Committee, the Planning and Zoning Committee. Last night, I spent time with the Airport Committee.